Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2025, meeting of the Town and Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via videoconferencing in accordance with the Town Board's enactment of Local Law 14 of 2022. Our next meeting and those following also will be held in person here at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation. So please keep checking the town's website for update and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, do not join the Zoom. Instead, go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you with us here tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of the room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Due to the renovation project involving the Town Hall's septic systems, restrooms located across the hall from this room are closed. Temporary restrooms are available outside the building in the east parking lot. Additional lighting has been installed to help provide access. Arrangements can be made with the security staff to reenter the building if using the facilities. We'll begin this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it's their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. Tonight, board member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom and John Rebhand is absent. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application will have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure the documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a set date. Those written comments can be addressed to members of the board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell in the Building Department. Mark Redman of the Council's office will be covering for Katie Gordon tonight. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our January 16, 2025, meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye. John, do you want to take us through the agenda before we start?
Okay. Number one on the agenda, application of Thomas Walker. I read this whole thing, right?
Oh, no.
The read number. Application of Thomas Walker, 1311 Flying Point Road, Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-179-1-29. I'm re-advertising this for the February 20th meeting. Number four on the agenda, application of Richard and Veronica Pelisi, 478 Oakhurst Road, Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-191-1-33. It's being re-advertised for our February 20th meeting. Number six on the agenda, 2200 Montauk LLC, 2200 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-85-1-27.1. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-205A1, general provisions and 330 Attachment 9, scheduled of permitted signs to allow a wall sign facing a parking lot where only wall signs facing public street frontage are permitted and any other relief necessary.
You can accept jurisdiction.
I'm sorry.
You can accept jurisdiction.
Yes, the board has jurisdiction. Thank you.
I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to February 20th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Number eight on the agenda, application of Irene Foster Irrevocable Trust dated November 3, 2023, 52 West Donnelan Road, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-296-5-21. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize an accessory apartment on a non-conforming lot. One, Section 330-112F, special standards for required lot area from 30,000 square feet to 13,837 square feet, and an accessory side yard setback from the required seven feet, 70% of the required 10 feet to 5.4 feet for the existing detached garage. And two, Section 330-11.2G1, to allow the size total floor area of the accessory apartment in comparison to the main dwelling to be 37.4%, where a maximum of 35% is permitted and any other relief necessary.
And the board has jurisdiction.
I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to February 20th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Number 10 on the agenda, application of 625 Butter Lane Homestead LLC, Agricultural Reserve, Bridgehampton Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-51-1-17.7. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to May 1st.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Number 13 on the agenda, application of Revolutionary Roads Properties LLC, 18 Seagate Avenue, West Hampton Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-354-4-51. This application has been withdrawn. Application number 14 on the agenda, application of Mark Kurtie and Keith Seegerman, 3 Maple Avenue, Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-228-2-22. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to March 20th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
The following decisions will be adjourned to February 20th. Salvatore Michelle Drago, Alira Hoffman and Stephen Hardigan, Changyi, 15 Rogers Lane LLC, and Joseph G. Warren Wagner III Irrevocable Trust.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
The, on the decision calendar, Islandwide Premier Services Incorporated. I move to reopen this application for written submissions.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
I move to close the application of Islandwide Premier Services Incorporated for decision later tonight.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
And finally, the decision on the application of Kristin Sasulski. Well, that application has been withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number two on the agenda, the application of Ian Singleton and Maude Navare, 271 Edge of Woods Road, North Sea Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-100-1-71. Applicant requests the following relief from Town Code Section 330-115C, continuance for a proposed one-story addition on the east side of the dwelling for a non-conforming lot. One, for a principal front yard setback of 89 feet where 91.7 feet is existing. Two, for a minimum side yard setback of 26 feet where 40.1 feet is existing. And three, for a total side yard setback of 68 feet where 81.90 feet is existing and any other relief necessary.
Carl Bedacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. Good evening.
Wait, wait, wait.
The board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Carl Bedacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. Good evening, members of the board, good to see you. The relief we're asking for today is threefold, as Mr. Leonard said. It's related to the addition of a modest 321.5 square foot structure attached to the home on the east side of the residence, so an expansion of the principal dwelling. The lot is 40,001 square feet. However, it is located in the CR 200 zoning district. Accordingly, it is under current zoning. It's exceptionally burdened as it's one-fifth the size of the minimum required under the zoning district. The home currently sits at 91.7 feet from the front yard. That's the current existing setback. The new structure is going to be 89 feet from the front yard, so just 2.7 feet in relief is required there, or 3% of what is permitted under the lot. The minimum side yard setback is the next that we must address. We're talking about the eastern side yard setback. We're asking for that to be 26 feet where under CR 200, 40 feet is required. It's important to note that this would be a permitted minimum side yard if this were our 40 zoning, which is more applicable to the lot size. And then finally, as a result, the total side yard setback of 68 feet where 81.9 is existing, so a 13.10 foot increase in conformity plus a 20% relief. This is not the only home in the neighborhood that is burdened with its lack of conformity as far as lot area goes. In fact, the average front yard, we did an analysis, and I will pass this out now. Thank you. So we did some lots in the surrounding area. As you can see, structures like this, as far as that side yard setback go, are, the relief we're asking for is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. In fact, across the street, a lot exists with a principal dwelling, side yard minimum 15.4 and another of 20 feet. The average front yard setback in this area, in this analysis, is 77.4, so actually further back from the average front yard. The average minimum side yard is 27.9. We are asking for just within that, but again, there are examples in the neighborhood of far less than the relief we're requesting. The average total side yard is 63.1, and again, we are asking for 68. The home benefits from pre-existing non-conformities naturally as it would, given it's the severe difference between the existing lot area and what is the minimum lot area. So, and again, many lots are affected this way. So you see these sorts of, this sort of non-conformity, and there's many examples in the surrounding area. I believe you have, do you have these elevations?
Yes.
So you see that the structure is somewhat minimal. It goes in nicely with the remainder of the home. This is, they're going to add a bedroom is the point. This is a young and growing family, so this is deemed necessary to accommodate the growth of their family. It's not going to cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood. As I said, this, these characteristics certainly exist in the neighborhood. They can't be achieved by some other means as we are trying to, you know, it's an, it's a, it's an extension on the existing dwelling, and we are left with where the dwelling sits as it is. It can't be achieved by some other benefit. It's not substantial, and again, it does not have any adverse impact on the area. So when looking at the five tests that you would consider when granting a variance, and certainly the overall standard that is, is the benefit to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the community, I think this is a rather straightforward and reasonable application. And I'm still happy to entertain any of the board's questions, if there are.
Bob said he's going to take the lead on this in John's absence.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm just looking, so the extension's going on the opposite side where the deck is by the garage, right? The garage is on?
That's right. Oh, no, 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 on the opposite of that.
Opposite, yeah.
Yeah, on the eastern side, yeah.
It looks heavily wooded. I don't think it have any impact on the neighbors. I don't think.
No, and we haven't heard any, from any neighborhood.
Nothing from the neighborhood of the east?
No.
I have a question, Carl. The existing setbacks are not in conformity with the CR 200. Were they ever granted a variance on there?
No, this was, this was pre-existing.
Well, I got the, I see the certificate of occupancy was 2014.
Yeah, well, that might be, is that the updated CO or is that the original? The structure has been there since this, since way back.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. So this is an, the structure way back.
Existed before the last upzone.
Okay.
So it was upzoned to 200.
It existed in the 70s and was upzoned.
Okay, because that, I was unclear, because all I had was the CO from?
That's probably the last updated.
Yeah, from 2014, but I didn't see anything else. Okay, so it wasn't a matter that you had a previous variance?
No.
Okay, so this is, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Someone elaborate on the comment from the Building Department about the over-clearing issues, or is that just?
We're not asking for clearing relief. The clearing is grandfathered, if you look at the 70 area or the 84 area, and you see that, but it's not really relevant to this application.
Yeah, I'm not doing any clearing.
Because the planning department, so the comment, though, is that the application should address any over clearance with the planning department because there is existing over clearance.
Yes, so it doesn't exist in conformity with what current clearing standards are, but it was cleared prior to those standards. So we'll get a pre-existing clearing determination.
So what's going to happen is it's in the system. They're going to come to our office. If they're going to claim pre-existing, we then send them to the Chief Building Inspector to get a determination. If they either get a determination in their favor, if it doesn't, then they do a remediation with our office.
And that's not within our jurisdiction.
No, 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 that's not just, it was just.
That's the remedy.
That process is already over there.
Okay, so you say this building was probably from the 70s?
It looks like it.
Prior to?
Yes.
Upzoning?
It was, yes.
And it looks like some of the other lots are 40 also.
Are, oh, yeah, they're all smaller, and it wasn't part of a subdivision. These are single and separate lots that were sort of involved into these non-conforming ones.
Anybody else from the board wishes to comment, please? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on Singleton 271 Edge of Woods Road? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, Bob, do you want to take it then?
I will close the public hearing, hold it open for written submissions until February 21st with a decision on March 6.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number three on the agenda, the application of Steven Genovese, 18 Dewey Lane, Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-152-1-16. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed addition to a one-family dwelling situated on a parcel that has two dwellings, one. Section 330-6, general regulations that references Section 330-11, residents' districts table of dimensional regulations to maintain a non-conforming minimum side yard setback of 18.2 feet where 20 feet is required. Two, total side yards to be maintained at 39.3 feet where 60 feet is required. And three, a rear yard setback of 59.25 feet where 70 feet is required. In addition, applicant requests relief from the Town Code, Section 330-167B1A, specific types of variances to increase the floor area from 34% from a habitable space total of the existing two dwellings of 2,456 square feet to 3,308 square feet and any other relief necessary.
And the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Arnold Montag Architect Office at 350 Northern Boulevard, Great Neck Suite 322, New York 11021.
Okay, do you want to, Mr. Montag, do you want to give us, tell us about this application?
Sure, first, before I go off on the details, I like to just give you a quick, fast history summary, not history of the country, relax.
Oh, please.
Just that it was exactly five years ago this evening that we sat before the board, just before COVID, and we were all scared, not knowing what was going on in the country. We did obtain approval.
Still there.
Yeah, a little less scared than I think we were, or maybe we were naive, because that was in January of 2020. But we wound up obtaining the approval. We had several issues. We were penetrating the sky exposure plane. We had a second floor addition. There were several variances, but it was granted. And then I guess COVID inflation and all kinds of things, budget. The client did not go ahead with the project. It sat dormant, and here they're ready to go. But we're not asking for an inch larger than we had. We're actually asking for half of what we had and just to keep more as a summer-type home and, and only a couple of side yard setback issues and front yard, which is really the rear yard because of the water that's on the water. So based on that.
It doesn't appear to be any period of relief at all, right?
No, 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 we're far away from the sky exposure plane. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Once again, my name is Arnold Montag Architect. We're here seeking variances for my client, Steven and Jody Genovese, the owners of 18 Dewey Lane, Hampton Bays. The premises is located on the north side of Dewey Lane, 307 feet west of Red Creek Road. It's in our 40 zone, right, 40,000 square feet. We're an existing non-conforming, we're a 33,456 square foot lot. However, we do have a cottage house on the lot that's existing and C of O. It's more restrictive, so we've worked out all of our, you know, the 50% calculations and all, and that all worked out. But what we are proposing is to do the addition on the south side of the one-story main dwelling and the front porch and extending the two-car garage. But along with that, we're going to have a roofed-over deck. The deck is already C of O, and that will be on the north side of the house facing the waterside. Section 330-116 for the extension as it relates to 330-167B is for the expansion of a non-conforming building lot as permitted in residents' R40. The proposed extension of habitable space does not exceed the 50% of the floor area of the existing building, which that's non-conforming use is drawn on the drawing Z2 that you have there. We're proposing to increase the floor area of the habitable space for the existing dwellings from 2456 square feet up to 3,308 square feet. The cottage is going to remain the same, and the main house will be enlarged from the 1,994 square feet to 2,846 square feet. We're therefore seeking relief from 330-115 for the proposed rear yard setback of 59.25, where a 70-foot minimum is actually required. 67.17 exists as non-conforming on the waterfront properties. The rear yard is street-facing the house, and the existing side yard setbacks are 18.2. Once again, where we need a relief where 20 feet is required. It's a pretty minor impact there. That's on the bedroom side addition, but both the existing side yards ought to be maintained at the proposed additions. The total side yards equal 39.3, where 60 feet is required, but once again, it is a non-conforming lot. We're seeking these variances to enlarge the existing bedroom and to add the attached two-car garage with some storage area. No side yard dimension will be less than 10 feet, and no rear yard dimension will be less than 30 feet as the proposed setbacks required by 330-115, it's a continuance for non-conforming lots held in separate ownership. Again, I believe it's a minor impact, and it's much more of a summer home than our original variance had requested.
So it's a reduction from the original variance?
Yes.
Was that variance granted or?
Yes, it was, five years ago this evening.
And it was never built?
No.
So what do we, what do we do with that variance?
I guess we'll have to.
It gets superseded.
It gets superseded?
Superseded.
It gets superseded. So, okay, so I was having a little trouble tracking the numbers in the variance that you were granted with the numbers on?
The original variance?
Yeah, yeah, I was having trouble tracking it. So tell me again the 50%, and how you arrived at that.
Okay, so the rule about when there's two dwellings on the lot, we had to prove that we were not increasing.
Because it's non-conforming, you can't increase by more than 50%.
Right, right.
So, okay, so then there's two dwellings, you add up both the square footages.
Right. It's been a while, let me just refresh my brain.
I have something from 524.
Yeah, I have the 50%. I believe this was reviewed by the examiner also and ordered them to give us the denial.
So I have 2,456 square feet for main and cottage.
So the existing, well, don't count the cellar, right? The cellar doesn't count, we're just counting the floor areas.
That's what you said, total existing floor area.
Right, so you had 1,190, and then the proposed large living room, 40, 51. Only 50% part, here we go. So we're 34%, which is less than 50%.
Okay. You know, again, I was trying to track it from the original variance, and I was having trouble, but.
Probably, yeah, because that one had the whole second floor.
Okay, so we should ignore all of that and just look at this as a new.
Fresh, fresh calculation.
New calculation, okay.
And why we're looking at distinctions, so the side yard setbacks are very much the same as they were.
Yes, we're going in line. We're not increasing the non-conformity.
You're not going closer to the water, and you're just going back or closer to the road?
Closer to the road.
By what is?
15. From 70 to 15.
Yeah, so you need wetlands or you not?
59.
I believe that everything was covered last time, so now the footprint's smaller.
If we get, if we do a new variance, does it need new wetlands?
I would think that you probably.
Did you have a Conservation Board Wetland Department previously with prior proposal?
I don't believe we did.
It wasn't included in the packet, so.
My guess is that the Building Department's going to ask for something from Conservation Board, either jurisdiction or, you know, something.
Yeah, I think we had a non-jurisdiction, but.
We'll find out if I do have to do it.
Have to go through that file again.
I'll report anyway, so they'll let us know.
Right, so.
You would have to make that application.
So we can't, we can't vote on it until we.
Till we get.
Until we get that clarified, so.
But if you don't need to, I mean, if you decide you can close it, leave it, we can submit submissions to receive them before we report.
Okay.
If you so choose to do that.
Yes, no, okay, we have that option, yes, okay.
And on the side yard, I know this was approved, it is small enough, but has there been any contact with the neighbors and any issues?
No, but if they're not here this evening, I know she was here five years ago, which she didn't like, and I promised that we would change that, and we went above and beyond to change it because she had a, there was an issue with the height of the balcony looking into her yard.
That's been.
And, right, in this case, there's no longer a second floor, so. And, right, in this case, there's no longer a second floor, so.
That's been eliminated.
So I think she was probably happy even though she read us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on eighteen Dewey Lane? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on eighteen Dewey Lane?
No one on Zoom? Oh, to answer your part question, fifty-nine feet instead of the seventy, about the rear yard, which is going by the road, not the water.
Okay, thank you.
And the existing, um, that's, so that's the new, that's the new request.
Yes, that's not, nothing to do with the last one. The other one was just.
Septic system.
Uh, septic, everything.
Is this some technology, new technology?
I don't know, because the question is, that's what I have to do with that new rule. Like, is that only for new homes, or do you see it after you're doing?
Percentage expansion of adding bedrooms, and I don't have the rule off.
Because in this case, we're only enlarging the bedrooms, so it's not an addition.
You're not adding a bath?
Well, I think.
If you're adding a bath, I may kick in the rules.
That's, that's not what drives the health department, it's bed.
It's bed, bed.
Yeah, yeah.
And there, there's, the, the, the building department utilizes, uh, the health department's standards, um, when they make a determination as to whether or not they're going to require a health department approval for a project.
How many bedrooms are you?
That was why I was wondering about Marty's.
We've got three bedrooms, both three bedrooms existing. We're just pushing out, we're enlarging the bedroom.
Okay, and you're adding, are you adding any bedrooms?
No.
Just enlarging the existing.
Enlarging.
I'm sure it's all memory, but consider it, or go, go, go get a grant if you can, but, okay. I was just curious, thank you.
A lot of people are actually installing these new systems because it makes a lot of sense, you know, environmentally as well as, you know.
Driving all of them.
Well, I, I keep thinking about it, but what do they do with the old system now? They dump that somewhere?
No, 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 it gets retired.
Yeah.
It's part of the install.
Fill it in with.
The install is part of the, the retirement is part of the install, so it gets retired. And then, and then, and the new one is not put in right where the old one was, but off to the side, so.
I imagine them digging up all these septic systems all over Long Island and then dumping.
Thousands have gone in, it's not complicated.
Yeah, no, I think they're, I think they're a good, a good move. Um, did I check if anybody was on Zoom?
Not yet.
Is anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on eighteen Dewey Lane? I think I did.
Notice their hands up.
Okay, good.
Okay, so this is mine.
Bob, we're going to, we'll, we're going to close it. And, well, we can close it, and then we'll get the written submission. If we don't get it in time, we have to adjourn the decision.
Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to hold it open for written submissions from whatever agency or whatever else we need till February twenty-first with a decision March sixth if abelled.
Second.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Get home safe.
Thank you. I just got totaled Christmas Eve, so do people say that?
No, I didn't mean, but.
No, 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 I always go in now and go, everybody, get home safe.
Okay.
Thank you. Number five on the agenda, application of Linda Perillo, thirty-eight Cove Road North, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash sixty-one dash one dash twenty-six. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed accessory building, ten by twelve-foot frame shed, one. Section three thirty dash one fifteen D, continuance for an accessory building setback from ten feet to six feet from the east lot line. And two, section three thirty dash eighty-four D, pyramid law for a sky plate encroachment to the east of ninety-one point six six seven cubic feet. In addition, applicant requests relief from the town code, section three thirty dash eighty-three K yards as it relates to three, section three thirty dash eleven, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for principal front yard setback from twenty-four point nine feet from the required thirty feet for a proposed roof over existing steps and platform and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Mr. Springer.
How are you doing?
Good. Swear to tell the truth? Well, let me swear you first. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal, PO Box seven fifty-three, Hampton Bays, New York.
Okay, so tell us about the application.
All right, we're trying to keep this brief and simple. Uh, I'm going to start with the, the roof over porch, which is not really considered a porch since it's only about four and a half feet. It's just a roof over. The house is currently just runs vertically, straight up and down. It's just for rain protection more than anything, and snow obviously isn't today, but, um, the, um, as you know, it's fairly common for these, and I know that we've done in the neighborhood of the Cove Roads, Cove Road North, Cove Road South. Um, there have been several, I, I brought one here. This is, um, this is one from early two thousands, from sixty to twenty-eight feet. Um, and then there's also several where the entire, that put in granted entire houses to be even closer than what we are. Um, it's, like I said, it's just a roof over. There's not even going to be any, uh, pilings at this point. Um, comes out about approximately four and a half feet. Um, the property slopes from the road towards the house, so it's actually even a little bit lower. Um, actually, the whole property slopes considerably, which is going to be part of the other equation here, is slopes from the north to the south, which is why it's put us in a little bit of a dilemma here. But as for that, I mean, that's pretty straightforward unless anybody has any questions. Just going over the existing steps that are there. Um, and again, nothing fancy, just for a little weather protection. Um, if we move to the rear yard, and I'm assuming that everybody got to see this, um, this survey. So we have two main issues here. Um, the property, um, is completely in the rear and sides um, enclosed by wetlands. And this is in lieu of doing a garage, which we have really no room to do. This was the best we could come up with. And the section where it is, is the only flat section, which I did, I did print out some pictures for you. The property there slopes from the east to the west and has a major drop-off, but we can only, Marty would only give us to where we are anyway, so it doesn't, it wouldn't have mattered. Um, because the, as you can see, the wetlands are within almost the same setback from the side yard as it is to the wetlands of six feet. The shed itself is not a very big shed, and it's actually, even though we are requesting, um, pyramid, the actual shed is only about nine and a quarter feet high, so it's not even, it's just that we, this is the only place we could get it, and that's why it's the six feet instead of the ten that were, is obviously required. Um, I don't, I don't really know what else to offer because it's, like I said, it's pretty straightforward. We cannot go into wetlands. We do have wetlands approval from Marty. Um, and like I said, it's pretty straightforward unless anybody has any questions. Uh, I have, I received all of the cards back except for one. I have spoken to the neighbor directly affected, which is, um, one house to the east and the neighbor to the south, even though there is considerable wetlands in between them and wooded. Um, nobody has had any issues with this, and we're all actually very favorable and asked if there was anything they could do to push it along.
Okay, Julie, this is yours.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did go over and see the property. It's very constrained, obviously, and that drop-off is significant, so there's.
Yeah, we did put in a few, um, we did actually have to put in retaining walls, which you would notice there's a wrap around the house a little bit, just to keep it settled.
So any questions I would have had are, I think, again, um, answered by the fact that there's just limitations in the property. I don't know if others have any questions.
I'm just wondering where the six feet is notated on the survey. I see ten.
Yeah.
For the shed.
Yes, that's, that's.
Me too. I see ten.
Which one do you have?
Right here.
It's approved October nineteen, twenty twenty-three?
Uh, I don't think you have, so this is, you can take a look at this one. This is the one, the six, and I can obviously get you more copies.
We should probably have one.
Oh.
Yeah.
It, you've expanded. This is now a bigger shed. We need to have copies of this.
Yes.
The shed is showing ten by twelve.
Ten, no, I don't know what survey you have, that, that's an old survey, it's ten by sixteen.
It's in the back of the pack.
The description is ten by twelve, and the survey I have is ten by, ten by twelve.
All right, um.
Yeah, this was in the, only in the back of the pack.
It was in the back of my pack. There was two of them.
Ten by sixteen? Yeah, I, I did not see that, but.
Yeah.
It says sixteen, it says ten by sixteen.
So we're talking about the same, is it the same, uh, pyramid relief?
Yeah, what's the pyramid relief?
It's based off of the ten by sixteen at the six foot, because the height of the, the height is the same.
So that it's ninety-one cubic feet?
Correct.
All right, so the pyramid is still.
I believe it is or something.
All right.
I do have an extra copy here if anybody, and I can also obviously get you more copies.
Julie, you need a copy.
Yeah, I should have a copy, but it, it isn't changing.
It's not going to change the numbers. It's not changing the setback, and it's not changing, yeah.
It's not, it's not changing the side.
It's not changing the pyramid or the setback.
Yeah.
All right, so the setback is six, not.
Six instead of ten.
Got it, okay, I have it from Bob now.
How could, how could it be closer to the side yard by four feet and not affect the pyramid? If that's, is that where the pyramid is being calculated?
Yes, the pyramid is being calculated off of this correct.
Six foot?
Yeah, at the six foot. And the height of the, height of the shed is the height of the shed. It's not, not changing, it's actually being, uh, it's semi-custom built. It's not just a buy off the rack, so it has to, we have to keep it at that, to keep that, um, pyramid encroachment, so that's not going to change.
And because you do have a wetlands permit, the, the normal front yard setback of sixty feet is reduced by half to thirty feet, and you're asking for a variance from the thirty feet?
Yeah, five and a half feet. I think it's twenty-four nine. Yes, twenty-four nine, so five and a quarter.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that sounds good.
And if anybody, I can give you an extra one of these and also drop off more if anybody needs them.
I think they have a survey you'll have.
Yeah.
Uh, wait a second, let me check. I do. I do. Yeah, what's the date on that, do you know?
Hmm, let's see.
Is that this call on the bottom, on the bottom right, something thirty-first, something maybe May something?
Yep.
Is there any concern about the notice saying ten by twelve, and, and what we're discussing now is ten by sixteen? Is there any?
No, any at all.
I'm just, I'm just raising it to be sure.
And just to be clear, I did, um, I guess the neighbor, um, had spoken to her previously about the size of the shed, and she also was not aware that it was ten by sixteen. She said, well, that's a little bit bigger than I thought. I said, well, it's not technically a shed. It falls into now an accessory structure, um, because it's over the ten by twelve, which is a standard shed.
Right.
Um, and she was, she was still fine. I mean, she has, you know, she has all the trees and whatnot. I mean, like I said, I left, I mean, this is how wooded it is around and to the side of it, and now it just, it falls right off the ledge, yeah, so.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on thirty-eight Cove Road North? Anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on thirty-eight Cove Road North?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, Julie?
We are going to close the public hearing. Keep it open for written submissions until February twenty-one with a decision on March sixth.
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair both sides. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night evening.
Number seven on the agenda, application of Susan Baumell Cornicello and Anthony Cornicello, or Cornicello. Twenty-three Comerant Drive, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash two seventy dash four dash one point seventeen. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. Section three thirty dash eighty-four D, side yard pyramid relief in the amount of thirty-three point two cubic feet for a second floor addition that exceeds the scope of the approved plans associated with building permit number P zero nine three nine four three and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Um, are you an attorney?
I am actually the applicant, but I'm also an attorney.
Okay, and I don't have to swear you in because you're required by law to tell the truth all the time.
I am.
You would think it'd be absolute lawyer.
But I will swear in your, this is your argument?
Yes.
Okay. So let me swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Sal Iannoni, twenty-eight Rogers Lane, Remsenburg.
Okay, Sal, applicant or whomever, want to tell us about the application?
So we're here for some pyramid relief for a second-story addition to a one-story residence. Um, property is lot number ten at Comerant Point. Subdivision was approved on September tenth, nineteen seventy-six. The property is located in the R forty zoning district. The property is non-under FEMA, and it also, uh, has non-jurisdiction, non-jurisdiction letters from the D E C and the Town Conservation Board. Um, according to the subdivision map that was approved, the side yard setback is fifteen feet on each side. As you can see from the survey, the existing first floor on one side, south side, is fifteen point three from the south property line. When I filed the building permit, um, I had the second-story addition at the fifteen, or actually the seventeen point seven-foot setback of the existing first floor. Uh, once I submitted it, it was brought to my attention that I needed pyramid, so I realized that I couldn't conform to that. So I immediately moved the second-story proposed addition back twenty feet off that side property line. When I did that, I did put my pyramid lines on it, and I thought I was compliant. Submitted it to the building department. The building department reviewed it, and then they realized I had to go and get, uh, I had to get what it's called.
A variance, a variance of pyramid relief.
No, I had to get a pyramid. We had to go get, we had to go through a long process. Um, trying to remember where I am here. It's located in a sensitive area requiring us to get an archaeology report to show there aren't ancient artifacts on the property. It was during that time that the building department realized, hey, wait a minute, let's look at the pyramid again. And they asked me to lower the pyramid line, not from the property line, down to the average grade across the front. When I did lower that, that little piece of my roof overhang was not compliant, one point two square feet. And that's why we're here.
We wish everybody came with that kind of pyramid relief, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's excessive.
And the archaeology report was already.
There's nothing, there was nothing.
Okay.
Hate to ask with that close.
So in the illustrations I handed out, A, B, and C, A is the original proposal, B is the second proposal, and C is what we wound up with, the one point two.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yes.
Yeah, no, that was a nice summer. Um, okay, let me see. I'm going to make this, let me see. All right, um, anybody? Kevin, did you, you had a hesitation?
Just one quick item on the building inspector's denial. It's referenced to a non-conforming pool location per the subdivision rule. Should that get settled?
Pool was permitted and had a C O before I came on the project. And I assume it has something to do with this fifteen-foot setback. If you look at the handout I gave you, I gave you the Comerant Point subdivision map, and it shows the fifteen-foot setback. And I believe this pool is fifteen feet, so it's compliant.
And it was C O'd, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, you'll find occasionally some of these subdivision maps where they identify building envelopes and setbacks that either didn't specify for accessory structures, or the language was very gray. This one's coming from the seventies, a bit C O'd, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm just drawing, bringing everybody's attention with somebody else's word.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'll have to.
And the forty zoning map, it's an R forty now, so setbacks are stricter under R forty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anybody else in the board have any? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on twenty-three Comerant Drive? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Um, all right, who is this?
Helen.
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 Helen, do you want to take this?
Yes, this is, I business this property. I find this truly to be, um, very modest. I don't like to use the word, I see modest used very frequently here, but it's truly a modest request, and therefore I have no problem with it. And I'm going to close the public hearing. And we get open for written submission to February twenty-first with a decision on March sixth.
Second.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Chair both sides. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The lawyer doesn't have to say much.
No, yeah, but that was good.
That happens once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay, number nine on the agenda, application of Parish Art Museum, 279 Montauk Highway, Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-133-1-16.7. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. Section 330-205B 235, general provisions. One, to allow a freestanding sign on the southeast side of the property, a front yard setback of 13.5 feet where a minimum of 20 feet is required. Two, to allow a freestanding sign on the southwest side of the property, a front yard setback of 17.2 feet where a minimum of 20 feet is required. Three, to allow three freestanding signs on the property where only one such sign is allowed. Four, to allow a 75-square-foot freestanding sign on the southeast side of the property where a maximum of 32-square-foot freestanding sign is allowed. Five, to allow a 220-square-foot freestanding sign on the southwest side of the property where a maximum of 32-square-foot freestanding sign is allowed. Two, section 330-207A illuminated signs, to allow a 75-square-foot freestanding sign on the southeast side of the property to be externally illuminated from the ground up where only light source is directed solely down onto such signs is allowed. Two, to allow a 220-square-foot freestanding sign on the southwest side of the property to be externally illuminated from the ground up where only light source is directed solely down onto such sign is allowed. Three, to allow a 75-square-foot freestanding sign on the southeast side of the property to be externally illuminated with different colors where only white light sources onto such signs is allowed. Five, four, to, four, four, to allow a 220-square-foot freestanding sign on the southeast side of the property to be externally illuminated with different colors where only white light sources onto such sign is allowed. And three, section 330-210.1, design guidelines to allow 75-square-foot and a 20, 220-square-foot sign made of a material other than wood, wood-like or metal and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
The board does have jurisdiction.
Any lawyers?
Any lawyers?
Yeah, okay, then let me swear you all in. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please individually state your name and address.
John Paul Sadowski, 337 Three Mile Harbor Road, Unit 15, East Hampton, 11937.
Monica Ramirez.
John Paul Sadowski, S A D O W, S K R.
Why?
Why? Monica Ramirez, Montague, 33 Atlantic Avenue, Sag Harbor, New York, 11963.
Okay. You got that, Candace?
I think her name is in the, in the file.
Yeah, I'll spot you in.
Yes.
Okay.
Sabas Sarafidis. The address is 5032 Morance Lane, Little Neck, New York. I work with the designer of the sign, Mr. Skolnick. He's on Zoom and he would like.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
He would like to present the concept for the sign.
Okay.
And the director would like to present the lead.
Yeah, yes, so.
But before you start, are you an attorney?
Lee.
No, I'm an architect.
Okay, well, then I have to swear you in. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Lee Skolnick, 50 Round Pond Lane, Sag Harbor, New York, 11963.
Okay, so we're going to start the discussion on the application. Who wants to take the lead on this?
I'll just give a brief.
Overview?
Overview and a little technical. So I'm the director of the Parish Art Museum. I've been with the parish two years and a half and my first year was dedicated to listening a lot, what the community had to say about the parish with the idea of making it more relevant and serve our communities the best way possible. As you know, we're part of the tax levy for Southampton and Tocco Ho, so we do receive monies from the government and from our communities to run the museum. And it has several things, there's a handful of things that the, the community has kept repeating to me as issues that we need to address. And probably within the top two is signage for the museum in the sense that folks do not know that this is a museum that's open to the public. They feel that this might be a private foundation or even a private house, given that the prominence of the, of the homes in this region with prominent art. There's also some concerns from some of our most vulnerable communities that say a lot of schoolchildren that come with the school buses or senior members, many of them are here year-round, that there's a, that the traffic on the highway is fast and folks, given that they don't know that there's like a public venue there, there's not enough time for people to slow down and expect someone that's going to make a turn. And that if by chance you miss a turn, there's nowhere in, within like a seven-minute ride where you can safely take a U-turn and come back. So many issues for us to be able to maximize the resources that our own communities give us to be able to serve our communities and a lot of them based on the fact that we don't have what I consider to be proper signage for an institution of that relevance and that size. We are the only accredited museum in a 50-mile radius of this caliber with a, a collection appraised at $140 million with a history, the most important history of, of the art of the United States. We know that, and I'll wrap it up, but the United States took over the contemporary modern art world in 1945 based on the work that Jackson Pollock and Lee Krasner were doing. So that played out in our, on our front, um, front garden and we have that legacy. We need to honor it and we are the only art experience for many people in our communities and proper signage to let people know that we have this tremendous resource in that community that gives safety parameters to folks that are not familiar with the region also. It's important. We have about 50,000 visitors every year, every year between 60 and 70,000 of those visitors. 60 to 70% of those visitors may be the first time that they visit, so they're not familiar with the region. So prominent, good signage would help at a, at a safety level, but also maximizing this cultural resource by this community for this community. So that's a big picture. That's why we applied. And I thought we were applying for two variances, so apologize for the long list of things I thought we were just asking for. Were too big, clearly not, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, if you don't mind, can I let these all talk?
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Skolnick?
Yes, thank you very much. I apologize that I can't be there in person tonight, but I'm out of town, but this is a very important project for the community and for us. As you may know, we work on a lot of museums in, in the community. We did the children's museum of the East End, worked on Guild Hall, the East Hampton Library, Roman Music Project, many cultural institutions on the East End. And we also work internationally on museum project in particular. And in this case, as the director stated, it's not just an identification issue, it's also a traffic issue. We want people to know that the museum is there. We want them to know enough in advance not to cause a traffic accident when they need to make a turn from either direction. So we've oriented the sign in such a way that it could be seen from either direction. That's why it has the chevron kind of plan to it so that there are two planes, one facing east or southeast and one facing southwest. The bigger one is southwest because there's more traffic coming from the west part of the island to, to the parish. The, the material, which is different from the code, was designed to be compatible with the building. As you probably know, the building is made out of concrete and we wanted to use the same finish on the sign to, to harmonize with the, the building and the distance. And actually, the angles in plan of the sign are parallel to the, the angle of the building on the property. So again, we were trying to have everything sort of be integrated and fit together. As far as the lighting goes, you know, we can adapt the lighting, but you know, today we're very sensitive to the dark sky regulations, but there are lights presently available that do not shine up, that they can shine up from the ground, but they don't go past the sign itself. So there would be no light spill into the atmosphere. It would only be illuminating the sign itself from a, from a recessed light in the ground. As far as the size of it, which I fully understand is larger than the, the code allows. This is, as, as the director said, this is a very fast thoroughfare and we wanted to make sure that people would see it before they passed it. And so we did some studies out on the site to figure out exactly where it needed to be, how far back it could be to be seen and how large it would need to be to, in order to be seen. So these weren't arbitrary decisions, but we fully realized that it would take a variance given in that area and that's why we're here.
Okay, um, any other comments from the panel? Okay, Kevin, this is yours. Do you want to start off?
Sure. So everybody loves the Parish Art Museum. You're asking for three signs where one's allowed and all, and most of them are big and they're wrongly lit according to the code. So I've driven by the, how long has it been in the present location?
12, more than 12 years, but as an institution, 126 years, going into 127.
Different locations.
Different locations, but beloved institution.
Yeah, yeah. All I'm saying is I drive the, drive the East Hampton for like the last 20 years, so very familiar with the whole approach and everything else. I get when the sliding doors are closed, it's hard to see a sign. I'm sorry, when they're, when they're closed, it's easier to see the Parish Art Museum sign if you know the pull-in driveway. And when the gates open and you're open for business, it's hidden. So I, I think you need a sign and the question is how many and how big, right? And there's been some communication submitted to the file and that some of us have had and, and there's a bit of community concern and we're going to hear from some people about that. I share those concerns. The, you know, there, the signs on the way, I went there again, one more time before this meeting and Duck Walk sign is pretty, pretty, pretty easy to see. You know, six or, or, or eight hours a day in the morning, at the end of the day combined, there's, there's no cars driving by there faster than about two miles an hour, right? It's just a crawl all the way through. So I, I get that you want to have safe and access in and I get that you want to have people arrive there with some comfort. And I'd, I'd ask you to think about, you know, how people now get to where they're going, which is you put in Parish Art Museum, I'm driving here from Roslyn in your navigation system and it tells you to turn quarter of a mile before you turn, right? So, so what might have been a, a necessity in 1955 isn't as much a necessity today. And I wonder if there isn't some other strategy with, with DOT or other, you know, opportunities, I put this to Anthony, where, does it have to all be on-site? Is there not another way to, to let people know, museum up ahead, turn, turn left, right? Because what we're looking for is a solution to the problem. It may be different than what is being proposed. And, you know, we can get into some of the details, but I, I just think a 200-square-foot sign is, is way over the possibility of consideration by a factor of almost nine or 10 times what's allowed. That's, I, I'll never support that. So, and I, I get that the museum is special, but it's not that special, that it gets a sign that size when nobody else in town gets a sign that size. And there's a million other people who probably would love a sign that size. And that's why the town has an ordinance on sign sizes. So I'm, you know.
May I?
Sorry, that's one, but I don't want to be ambiguous about some of my thoughts.
We're all going to comment, so, you know, that's Kevin's comments. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, sure. Well, it is my understanding that the winery next door, their sign is on, on top of a mountain, which gives them a lot more visibility than our plot, which our sign is higher than a normal sign because our land is actually going down from the street of the highway. So if, if we had a little, you know, we can make the sign smaller and be just as visible, but we don't have the same topography or the same landscape as Duck Creek. The other thing is that we don't have just day-hours operations. A lot of our events take place in the evening, particularly in the winter where it's pitch black at 4:00 P. M.
Got it.
And that actually is one of the reasons why a lot of our educational public programs in, in the evenings just cannot take place. That includes after-school programs for local children that are free. And so again, you know, this is, uh, we are a year-round institution, so we did do a lot of, you know, when we have to be and JP here is our facilities director, we were, every time we have to be out there in the, in the meadow measuring something, we have to be two or three of us because we don't know when someone is not going to see us. We're not on a straight line. We're coming out of two curves, a lot of landscape. It's actually dangerous for a lot of staff when we're out there. And so again, I think this is a safety measure and, you know, maybe perhaps when you drove there in the winter, there's not a lot of traffic, but certainly when there is, it goes very fast. And it's a lot of folks that are working and having two or three-hour commutes that operate in a very fast environment, which is why it's very dangerous when we mix the folks that are working and commuting back and forth with our tourists.
Hold on.
Yes.
Having a sign doesn't make a left-hand or a right-hand or a pull-out happen any better. And if you have other, you know, egress-ingress issues, that's not fixed by a sign. So I think it's important to sort of segregate out what these issues, and I'm not in, I'm not suggesting those aren't real concerns, right? I'm just trying to make sure that the problems you're having are, are being fixed by the proposal before us, which have substantial variance requests attached to them, right? If, if you built a sign and it fit the code and you never came here, I, I wouldn't be upset, right? I wouldn't be going, oh, no, right? But you're here with a really substantial variance request and I'm not sure some of that is fixing what you're talking about.
Well, I am, um, this proposal counts because that's what the community have asked us.
I believe you.
Right? And I do believe a good signage because we do, you know, and this office does that a lot of like signage, I think a lot of signage is preemptive and thus address some of our egress-ingress issues because we do that every day. So I beg to differ with you on that one, but we can disagree on that one. And the last point, this institution does not deserve a sign of that size. You know, we, just let me tell you a little bit of like the, the standing of the Parish Art Museum in this nation. Because of the work that we do at the parish, I was nominated by President Biden to be part of the Board of the National Libraries and Museums. That's how they perceived us. Because of the work that we do at the parish, particularly our anniversary two years ago, the governor of the state of New York appointed me with a Senate vote to be in the Council for the Arts. So we are, you will not find in the whole East End or even, you know, from the Central End to Long Island to the East End and other institution with those credentials. And so in that sense, we do think that we merit for the benefit of the community. Perhaps we can disagree a little bit on the side, but do we merit us? If we're going to be doing this after 126 years of operating, we want to make sure that the sign works and that we're not here 10 years from now saying, you know, we're still having the same issues because it was not prominent.
I think that everybody, everybody recognizes the prominence of the Parish Art Museum, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you then merit a larger sign to recognize that, you know, recognition. I mean, I just, you know, that to me doesn't, doesn't strike a bell. What I, what I think is, is kind of interesting is coming from the southwest or coming from the west, there are two driveways that are right next to each other. And that one, in my opinion, definitely needs distinction and that needs a sign. So, you know, if you're coming from like East Hampton, there's like the, the, you know, spa or whatever it is and then there's the, it's hard to even tell which is the driveway for the Parish Art Museum. So I have very little problem with having a sign probably closer to the road on that particular side than necessarily the other side. Uh, do you want?
You're saying?
Wait, wait a second, Mr. Skolnick. Wait a second, let Mr. Skolnick.
I apologize. Is it okay to?
Go ahead.
Respond? Yeah, are you saying that the sign facing east is more acceptable than the sign facing west?
From my point of view, I think you have a, a greater need for a sign closer to the road on the east than you do on the west. Because there's, you come upon it very quickly, right out of the middle, there's a whole bunch of roads, there's a driveway right next to it. So in my opinion, that's probably, you know, again, we have to look at size, we have to clearly look at lighting and all that other stuff, but I, I find less objection to that sign.
Can I reply to that?
Yes.
Yes, if you're familiar with the region. If we have 70% of our audiences coming from New York during the season.
Yeah, I, no, I get that you're not getting the same, the same, you know, number of people coming from the east as you are from the west.
Correct.
Let me just make this point because I'm not sure it's penetrating. And this is, I want to say this with all due respect, again, I, I've known plenty of people that, that benefactors to the museum for the last 40 years. This is not about knocking that down, right? You're presenting to us traffic access and site issues. Signs address a portion of that. A traffic engineer might say, let's see if DOT will, will, will put a painted arrow that says museum straight ahead, right turn. I have no idea. That's not my expertise. But what I'm saying is it seems like every problem you have is being fixed by a giant sign and a few of us are having a real hard time with that. And you might want to think about a more comprehensive holistic review of traffic access in here and what's the best way to get people in here safely and, and coherently so that they're not, as you say, overshooting, turning around and looking to turn. There's a lot of information, a detailed memo from the planning board that has a series of recommendations that you're going to have to address that I take very seriously and I'm sure others do as well. And then we have members of the public, not surprisingly, have similar concerns.
Okay, Kevin, let's have, do you want to say something from the planning board?
Well, I mean, does the applicant have the planning board's comments?
No, you did not get?
No, no.
No.
Well, we just got them, so.
So, you know, obviously, overall, the planning board has comments. I'll just go. Um, I'll just go through them real quickly, to be quite honest.
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, so the planning board here says they want, they would, you know, recommend that both signs be reduced in size. They're suggesting that, um, and that they not be illuminated from the ground up. The code requires, you know, uh, top down, something boot neck, um, using a consistent, consistent lighting. Uh, suggesting that the east sign, which I guess is the smaller sign, uh, maintain what is permitted in the zoning district. Uh, they're saying that the larger sign should be reduced in size. They didn't give a specific amount, but they said something, I think they're asking for 200 square feet or something.
200, yeah.
Yeah, so something smaller, and the larger sign should meet the, the 20-foot setback. Either non-illuminated or they illuminated from, uh, above and directed down. And, uh, the lighting shall be white, um, and that the 2,700 Kelvin. So there's been a change to the lighting code where they reduced the maximum Kelvin, which talks about, I guess, the, the, the color brightness, I think.
It makes it a warmer tone.
Uh, which that should be easy to, to maintain. Uh, and then they mentioned in here about the, the meadow easement in the front. So I guess what they're saying is here, the larger sign, I guess there's a meadow easement there so that we'd want to make sure that vegetation is, is maintained low, um, obviously.
Yes.
Because there's a, we have an easement put in place there to maintain vistas and everything, so.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Skolnick, before we go to the rest of the board?
Yeah, I was, I was just, uh, I guess my question is, and this is maybe a tough one because of the way regulations are written. But if there are lighting schemes that presently exist which are now being used conventionally in conformance with dark sky codes, but do illuminate a sign essentially laterally from in front, but, but on the ground, how does something like that get approved if we just say nothing can be, nothing can illuminate up? I mean, nothing above the sign would ever be illuminated. It's not pointing up. How, is there some mechanism?
Well, right now, we're dealing with the code that's, you know, that we, we have to abide by. I mean, there can be changes to a code, um, but that's not something we do. And unless there was like really legitimate reasons to reconsider the code, I don't think this board would agree to anything that would jeopardize that, so. Did you want to say something, John?
Well, I wanted to ask, so it seemed like there were three signs?
Yeah.
Where's the third sign?
I think it's on the gate or something.
I'm seeing.
There was a third sign.
It's just the two.
The sign on the gate could be removed.
Okay, so the description was incorrect.
Yeah, so it's just the two. Two signs?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from every, go ahead, sir.
The sign, the large sign is two, uh, faces in two directions. Maybe they're thinking of that as two signs.
Okay.
Okay. I understand Kevin's point of view. I understand your point of view. I get it. And I do understand the CAC's point of view. Um, and I'd like to hear from everybody before, you know, making any, uh, judgment calls in my head. Initially, I, look, the signs are pleasing. They're, they're very architecturally pleasing. They're beautiful. I don't know that I would go so far as to say keep them just to 40. I'm not sure I would say you can have your 220. I'd like to see something in the middle. I'd like to see everybody compromise. Um, I have an issue with multicolored lighting. I think that would be garish.
We do. We can say multicolor, it was.
Yeah.
We do.
To be extremely, externally illuminated with different colors where only white, white sources are allowed. That's in your description. So if that were, if that were actually your request, I would be against that because I think it would look garish, and I think it would also not comport with what you are and what the building looks like.
We don't get color.
Okay, so, so we've got that settled. There's no multicolor lighting.
No.
Good. But I'd like to hear from other people. I'd like to hear some more about, um, yeah, I think you can push it back. I don't see the need for the setback relief. I don't under, unless, and I do understand you're saying that it does slope down, although your renderings don't really show that. So, I mean, and I don't have any kind of a survey that shows what the, um, elevations are. So I really can't, uh, address that from the papers that we have. But, um, you know, and there's always, Mr. Skolnick can certainly work with, you know, if you push it back to the proper setback, maybe he can change heights in order for it to be more prominent. But yeah, so that's where I am. I'm kind of in a wait and see, let's hear what everybody has to say, and let's see if there's something we can do to make this work out.
Let's hear from the rest of the board before we go.
Yeah, I just want to echo something Kevin said. I think we can all acknowledge the special place you have in the community, and you deserve it. But it's hard for me on the board to distinguish why you get a big sign and someone else doesn't because they're a less special commercial institution, call it a bank or whatever it might be. You're in a commercial area there. And so I, I have trouble reconciling that, and, and it's just part of what's going on for me.
May I address that? Um, we are a nonprofit, and we are the most important arts education for the public good organization. And while we are privately owned, partially privately owned, uh, we're there for the public good. We're, our main audience, you know, we serve at least 10,000 students in our region. That's why we get the tax levies together with two other organizations. We're not there to make money like a bank. We're there to serve the public good. And if our communities don't know that we're there. And what we want to do is remove obstacles for them visiting the museum. We're not, we're not making any money, believe me, quite the opposite. So that's the only, I mean, you know, I'm a, I'm a temporary steward of this institution, you know? This is what the community has asked me to tackle. And, uh, because they want, because they love the parish and they want people to come to the parish. And this has been identified even by the New York, anyway, by, by the New York Times who came to do a review and couldn't find the museum and therefore didn't give us a review. So, um, we are a public, for the public good.
I understand. Thank you.
Well, I think the point's been made that, you know, I think we all recognize that there's probably a need for a sign. Whether it should be the size that you've requested or not, and with the lighting that you've requested or not, is a different issue.
All right, it's seven times, it's seven times larger than what's currently allowed under the code.
We want you to be seen.
That's a little much for us.
We want you to be seen. No, we want you to be seen. We want people to come. Um, but I think you're hearing from the board, unless Bob wants to contradict me, that the, the sign is, is, the size is an issue, and the lighting is an issue that you're recommending.
Well, I'll jump in because I have the utmost respect for your agency, but I think you're opening the floodgates, like Kevin said.
Yeah.
Any application would come before us and say, you granted a sign this large just because they're a nonprofit, just because they do this, we want it also. We can't delineate between the two. We can't discriminate.
You can't say one is more worthy than the other.
Correct.
Yeah, we would lose the ability to differentiate the cases.
I have no problem with the two signs. I have no problem with the setbacks. I have, I don't even have a problem with the ground up illumination. I don't have a problem with that. But the size, we're going to open the floodgates for McDonald's to want a sign.
Can I just make one comment? We, I'm, I'm a trained architect together with Lee. So we approach this from the architectural perspective where we have a 14-acre property and a 200 linear building. And in terms of, you know, what would be visible and what would be appropriate within the language of the, you know, it, it was, it is part of a more cohesive design, and it's part of a, having an appropriate, um, scale to the building, to the land, and, and to the public access that we need to, that's why we felt it.
That's an enticing argument. It absolutely is. It was the first thing I thought when I went through this application. But then I put my zoning board hat on and I said to myself, what would happen if we were to allow this application to move forward unhindered? I think we would be setting a, a poor precedent. You're asking for a ton of relief. It's like when we have people coming in for, you know, 5,000, 6,000 square foot of pyramid relief, and we go, hold on. We just don't do that. You know, you're literally, when you do the math, it's seven times as large of what would be otherwise allowed.
So I think we would probably want you to.
We, we, yeah?
Could I just say something, Mr. Skolnick, for a second? I think what you're, you know, you're hearing from us is be creative. You obviously are very creative. And see if you can accommodate some of the concerns that we have so that we can, you know, work together and come up with a plan that works for you and works for us. And, you know, given that you're, you're spectacular reputation, I can't imagine that you're not going to be able to come up with something. Uh, Mr. Skolnick, go ahead.
I, I was just going to clarify one point. The size of the sign was not based on our sense of how important the parish is. It was actually based on a functional concern about people seeing it or being able to read it when going, when traveling down 27, through 27. We can certainly make it smaller. If we make it too small, it's not going to be seen, and that won't have done anyone any good. So it's got to be functional as well. As far as the design, as, as Monica said, it is based on trying to be cohesive with the design of the building, which is 200 feet long. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I, I understand. Well, it's an unusual building, but because it's an unusual building, it doesn't necessarily mean that as the zoning board, we're going to like find a 25, you know, 30-foot long sign to, you know, correspond with the long building. Let's go to the audience.
Could I just say one more thing? It may be that, look, you guys have to go back to the drawing board and, and say to yourselves, it may be that a smaller sign gets lost in the sea of that meadow. And maybe, and maybe that smaller sign, maybe the setback would make sense. Giving you the setback relief would make sense because it would be more visible from the street. By the same token, it may work the other way as well, but you have to kind of play with it and see what, what comes of it. And if there is a true visibility issue, you have to document that and show it to us. And that becomes something that we look at.
Thank you for that, because we did, we did do a mock-up. We did do the size. We did the placement. We would. And, you know, doing the mock-up and driving up and down and see where the grass is hit and where the topography falls, that's what, this is very, um, empiric, like we did it.
Yeah.
And that's how we came to some of these.
You did some testing.
We will go back and make it smaller.
Go ahead.
But I, I do have to say that.
The applicant has made an impassioned plea here for this case, you know, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
So the planning board's made some comments here I think you guys should consider, but I'd like to hear what the.
Yeah, and if you, and if you have not seen those comments before?
They've not, we, we just.
Okay, well, then that'd be very helpful for you to look at them and, and take them under advisement. Okay, let's see if there's, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Rachel, come on. Uh, Rachel, you're not an attorney, are you? How can I swear? Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Rachel Verno. I live on Head of Pond in Watermill, 576. But I'm speaking today as, um, on behalf of the Watermill CAC, which I am the chair of, the Watermill CAC. Um, our, I think probably everything that's, our, our CAC submitted a letter some time ago. I don't know if all of you got an opportunity to read it. Um, I don't want to take up the board's time, reading it into the record. And I think probably the conversation tonight, you've all covered our comments. Um, I do want to say, um, for the record, we do oppose, um, not only the number of variances, but also what those variances include. So, um, there's been some clarification that the, um, application changed. I was under the impression it was for three signs. Two signs, still in our opinion, is too much. Um, obviously, the size is too much, and the lighting is a concern. Um, I don't know if the Dark Skies Committee has weighed in on the application. I know we've had comments from them. I would say some of the comments tonight raise other issues for us that we haven't addressed in terms of the materials, the cement. I've studied architecture. I appreciate it. Our, our CAC, as I've said in our letter, um, is a big supporter of the museum, and we recognize its importance. It's not a good precedence, in our opinion, to start allowing the number of signs, um, the size and the lighting. That corridor is very different in character than County Road 39. Um, you're bordering on residential neighborhood. You're, you're bordering on historic area. And so we think that, or and we hope, and our expectation would be that the museum would come back with an application that didn't require having to come before this board. But if they did, it would be more reasonable. And I'd also say, um, it would be helpful in terms of community outreach if somebody from the museum had made an attempt to, whether it's through a CAC or some other means, to speak to the community and explain to them why they're making this application and, um, and get their input so they could get some feedback from the community. So my hope and my expectation is that they will do that. It would be great. We have a meeting on Monday. It's on our agenda for the CAC. If we could see some of the renderings, if we could see, um, get a little more detail. And I hope that the board will, um, keep written comment open so people that don't have, don't even know about this application have an opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel, and good suggestions.
Yes, ma'am.
Monica Olivia. Let me swear you in. Do you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Olivia Motch, One Little Cob Road, Watermill. I'm the. Olivia, can you just say your last name for me? M-O-T-C-H. Thank you. I'm the chair of the Dark Skies Committee for the town of Southampton. And we met yesterday, in fact, and we did see the planning board's recommendations. And, and we were all, everyone there was very unanimous in, um, not wanting any variances given on the lighting. We were already concerned about the amount of lighting that does come with the present artwork that comes across the meadow. And, uh, so we were, were very concerned about more lighting along that corridor. That is the entrance of Watermill, and especially, well, I guess now there is no colored lighting, but that was another issue that we were concerned about. Also, I am, I've worked for Met, besides being in this position. I've also worked for Roy Lichtenstein for many years, when he was building the sculpture that's now in the front, which was never designed to be a sign. But it is very much in its nature, the way it's being used now, a very visible sign for the museum. And I, so I think that is adding signage already. And I also, since I live very close to the museum, I'm aware of the traffic. And Susan, what you brought up about that, if you are coming from the west, east, and those two driveways together, I do know a lot of people hesitate right there. And I even have turning into the museum. It is a confusing spot right there where there could be more of a, a small sign next to the street, next to the road.
Right.
I don't see the need, I remember when the museum original design was being done. I did an exhibition years ago of Roy Lichtenstein's sculpture at the Parish Art Museum. I was on the Exhibitions Committee. I've been involved with the museum, not recently, but for a long time historically. And I think it's a great institution. But I think there's, it doesn't need to be broadcast any more than the origin, than the building itself. I think people don't really miss it, uh, driving and with Google now. I don't think it's an issue. So I, I just don't see why, to fill in more fields, this was originally farmland. And the town allowed the museum to be built there, and it was going to be small buildings and that were going to be very much like farm barns. I know some of you have been around so long, you do remember all those original plans with the meadow in front. And that meadow, I mean, perhaps it's, it's more important to keep that meadow going than spend more money on signage, elaborate signs, because that was supposed to be part of the nature of the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
Uh, Susan, can I like to say something?
Okay, Helen.
Uh, one of the things, well, first of all, I thought that what Kevin said before was very on point. I agree pretty much with everything he said. And one point that people are not concentrating on that I think is important is to find, um, other means of getting what you want. When he mentioned about the DOT and having the arrow, I mean, the, I, I think this has not been thought out that well. I mean, I think these people went quick to the signs. Well, what else, knowing that these signs are not acceptable with the code? What other means of getting people to go in your front door have you tried? So I haven't heard it. So I haven't heard any. All I hear about is size, signs, signs, signs. And I would like to hear about something, other things that you have examined that could alleviate the need for these signs that it seems a lot of people don't like. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, um, any other comments? I think this has to stay open.
Can I just reply?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can we adjourn this? We're going to, but first Monica wants to say something.
Just three clarifications. One is that it's not enough to put the Parish Art Museum on Google because sometimes it actually takes folks to the Southampton venue. So that is confusing. We've heard that also, and we want to address that with Google also. The Lichtenstein sculptures do not belong to the parish. We don't own them. They're a long-term loan. They were on a five-year loan and now they're on a five-year loan. But they belong to Glen Furman. We do not own them. We cannot rely on them to be the signage for the parish, which is why we're looking at these signs. We have seen, you know, if this or any sort of this signage gets approved, this is a $250,000 project perhaps, for which I still have to fundraise. So believe me that I have looked at other options. One of them actually is activating the facade of the parish. You will see that for the last four or five years, we've tried to do some neon art on the walls. During COVID, we have right now an installation with light that ripples through the facade of the museum, all of that. We have been able to fundraise because these are art projects and these are things that we're trying to do to signal that there's a museum here. This is different. But again, we do have a highway sign. It's a brown one that's in front of the. We do have a small sign about 20 feet on the highway and that belongs to the highway system. I only saw it for the first time like six months ago when I was stopped there in traffic with a jitney. It's at the height of the jitney, so I had never seen it there. It's there. And we do have the double arrows. So, yeah, we can explore with highways, but they're going to tell us that there's already a sign there and that we already have double arrows coming in from the, from the east. So we are exploring all options, but what I'm letting you all know is that the community requested a sign.
Okay. There's different communities. Obviously, you spoke to one community. There's another community that would like to hear from you, which is the Watermill CAC. My strong suggestion would be it might make sense for you to attend one of their meetings.
Correct.
And give them more information and, you know.
Well, we didn't know they want to hear from us, but now we do. I mean, we followed the guidelines of.
So I think there are a couple of suggestions. That being one, trying to be a little bit more creative in terms of size, looking at the lighting, which is a concern. We are, we do abide by the code. And right now, though there may be new illuminations that don't go beyond the sign, that hasn't been recognized in our code yet. And so we would like you to look at the sign, the size, the lighting, the setback, the. And possibly exploring with DOT a little bit more in terms of options. And tell them what your concerns are. You make a very passionate plea about this. And they certainly don't want to create a hazard on the road. So there may be other things that they can do as well.
We did approach them, you know, and the reply was, you already have a sign. We already put a sign up.
Yeah, well, tell them it's not working. Anyhow.
Yes, but I'm here letting you know the same thing about the signs on the property.
Yeah, okay. So Kevin, this is your lead. I think we have to keep this open.
Yes.
We would like you to come back. And we would like some information from you as to how long and how much time you would need to come back, doing some homework.
Well, I need, I honestly need to think whether we're going to move this forward.
Okay, that's fair, too.
The ones that it takes to hire professional architects and the likelihood of these passing and, you know, the resistance of the community. I'm here to serve, you know, I'm trying to do the best for the museum. But if there's no consensus and the amount of resources we're putting into this, I'm going to have to assess whether I come back or not.
I totally understand that. What we would probably do is adjourn. You can always withdraw your application if you feel that that's, you know, I would suggest that you do make a passionate plea, that you perhaps do a little bit more homework on it.
Oh, compared with Lee, we'll see whether we'll follow the suggestions. But to be honest, if I feel that we don't have a sign that's going to solve the issues that we think they can sign.
That's fair.
Then we might not.
Monica, that's fair. And we respect that. We really do. And please, none of this is meant to reflect on the importance of the museum and how we all feel about it. But we do have a role here. You have a role. We have a role. So that's kind of what we're trying to do. All right, so how much time do you need before you want to come back? Lee?
Well, we'll meet next week. And I think then we can tell you. I mean, Monica has to decide whether she wants to move forward with this or not.
Susan, the earliest would be March 20th anyway.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay, so that gives you plenty of time.
3/20.
Okay, Kevin, March 20th.
3/20.
March 20th?
Yes.
So we'll come back for March 20th. Comments open, we'll just, no comment. I mean, comments received.
Well, we always accept comments.
All the way to, all the way to. So we're going to adjourn.
3/20.
So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this hearing for Parish Art Museum until March 20th.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair both sides. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 11 on the agenda, Bedokburn LLC, 108 Parish Pond Court, Shinnecock. Sub-county tax map number 900-211-1-11.029. Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening, again.
Mr. Benacasa.
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. This is the second time this was on. The relief requested is for a sports court located on the north side of the property. A sports court.
You're the sports court, dude.
In the required front yard. When we were last here, first of all, the, I was actually not able to be here, but Mr. Solinsky covered for me. But I believe the board required that the, if there be a condition on the variance, if it were to be issued, that this would not be for pickleball. We will do that and that's noted on the new map. The board also asks, or the new survey, the board also asked that the accessory setbacks be shown. Those are there now. And that we explore locating it elsewhere. A few things about locating it elsewhere. One, if you were to, if you see the community, do you guys have an area map?
Yeah.
Was that submitted?
I don't have it with me.
Okay. It was with the original submission. But you can see that if you, one, besides breaking up the open space in the, what is the rear yard, you can see that if you put the court there, it would be more of a disturbance to more of the lots around it. Where it's located now is directly next to an existing tennis court on the property to the east, or the west, I should say, that was approved by variance with a 10-foot setback. Exactly what we're asking for. The distinction between that relief and this relief is weirdly or strangely the shape of the lot. And it's really hard to see. I wish we could pull up something. You guys don't have your area maps. Is it possible to pull something up there now? No, okay. I'll come around and show. So this lot is a traditional flag lot with the flag pole portion coming off this circular.
Right, right.
Up to this. This lot, for some reason, has this cutout. As a result of this cutout, it's not a flag lot. And that was considered the front yard as opposed to this whole span.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
See? So I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's a difference between this lot. See how this has this little shape here?
But it's how it comes in this way.
This comes in this way.
And not this way, okay?
Yeah. So this lot is shaped with the traditional flag.
Yeah.
This lot does not.
Okay, because it's got an arc right on the circular.
He's got like 20 feet. So as a result of that, the town considered this as front yard and did not require front yard relief for the tennis court, believe it or not. Because of this, with a flag pole, this is the front yard. So now, even though it's essentially in the same location, it's a smaller court. No pickleball court, no pickleball. But although essentially in the same location, this requires front yard relief where this one did not.
This is the front yard or, so why didn't it require?
No, it's.
You just said it was a front yard.
Because it comes off the cul-de-sac, this is what the town considered the front yard.
Just that little.
Yes.
That little, like, 12 feet or whatever.
Yeah, so that's why the relief granted.
And what would this be, the side?
That's just side yard, which is what we're asking for here. 10 feet side yard. That's what they got there.
And then, and because this is the flag lot, it was determined this is the front and this is the rear?
That's right. Because with a flag lot, the applicant picks which yard is which.
Yeah.
And when they built the house, they picked this as the front yard.
Okay, so, all right, so, okay, got it.
So does everyone got it?
Yep.
It's not really a front yard.
That's not, no, I can't say it's not, because it is.
It is.
Well, it's technically the front yard, but it just doesn't act like a front yard.
I don't want to say the word arbitrary.
It's not like you're putting it next to the road. I, we.
The driveway stays.
It just comes right into.
It'll just be jutted around.
Come right into the driveway?
Yeah, it comes right into the driveway.
Okay.
So the, there was an opposition at the last hearing. This neighbor here opposed it.
Yes.
Because of the sound.
About it, yeah.
Again, we are prohibiting pickleball court. It's going regardless. It'll still be sunken with.
Four feet.
Four feet with sound attenuation. This is fully buffered here along the northern property line. And the court as laid out does not actually, if you look on the survey, you can see, doesn't actually border her property. It's just to the west of her property. So in light of the fact that this is kind of, the tennis court for the neighboring lot is here, it's essentially the same relief that was given to that tennis court. Putting it here would actually be more of a burden to the surrounding area. We are no longer asking for it to be a pickleball court. And we will specifically, and we will, you know, we anticipate the zoning will be conditioned on there not being pickleball. There's a buffer and it's sunken. We think in light of the other relief granted in the area, the concessions that we've made, that this is now a reasonable request for relief.
Have you contacted the neighbor in a way that she's withdrawn her opposition?
I am not aware that she's withdrawn, but I have not heard of any new opposition. I cannot, so I have not been in touch with the neighbor. She may be on Zoom. I don't think she's.
She's not, I don't think she's in the audience, but.
But, you know, for what it's worth, my client is willing to make these concessions. And, you know, is eager, is what they're saying, to, because, listen, this, she's not, she's not moving. So anything they do on this is, so they'd be really happy to make peace and hopefully.
What's the sound attenuation other than the sunken?
I think that is the sound attenuation.
That's all?
And there'd be landscaping around that.
And the lands, is there landscaping?
There's landscaping around that, yeah, existing.
Existing. I would like to condition that it would have to be, it would have to be maintained.
Sure, so the hedging there will have to be maintained. That's fine.
I always appreciate the way you make your arguments.
Thank you.
I still would have liked to have seen how this would have fit next to the pool, which was how I presented it to your.
My standing.
Your partner, your standing.
Yeah.
And my concern is, is that, you know, I just see perpetuation of others shoving in our faces, this, of decisions like this on a continuum that leaves this little room. And, you know, it's, what's the minimum variance necessary, right? So I understood everything you said and it was lucid, right? But, you know, I worry about continuing five-foot, 10-foot setbacks from front yards, classified as front yard reasonably or not. And that's a concern I have. But I'm just sharing that out loud so everybody hears.
And I appreciate your comments. And very often, Kevin, when you say it, they go, "to better design." So, but I appreciate that.
Yeah.
They did, we did consider it. We, if you, I don't know if there was confusion about actually showing it on the lot, but you can sort of visualize where it would go. Remember, we have a rear yard setback we have to accommodate there, but that's 10 feet.
I interpreted it differently, but I'm not holding it against you.
Okay, all right, good. I think, you know, the thought was, A, this would be adjacent to neighboring backyards as opposed to a, one neighboring front yard and another yard with a tennis court. And B, there is a preference to keep that open in the area. But I do respect your point.
Any other comments from the board? I think you, you know, tried very hard to meet what our concerns were. It's an odd, it's an odd piece of property because it's got the water on the other side. I mean, it's, you know, it's a flag lot. You know, it's a challenge.
Yeah, and you know, it's tempting to make an argument about environmental impacts putting it near the water, but that is a man-made park, so it's hard to say that.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. Anyhow, I appreciate the fact that you are going to stipulate no pickleball, that you will, would put into the decision that the landscaping would have to be maintained. Is there anything else? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one on Zoom.
I'd like to ask Mr. Benacasa a question.
Okay, Helen has a question.
Helen's answer. Hi, Helen.
What exactly, if you don't mind, is the sports court going to be used for? You tell me it's not going to be a pickleball. What is its use?
I honestly don't know exactly what sports they plan to. I can assume that there might be basketball on that.
Tennis.
No tennis.
It's not big enough for a tennis.
It's like tiny.
It's tiny.
Pachy?
You know, roller skating? I don't know. You know, do they have little kids? You know, that kind of thing.
They're, they wanted it to be a pickleball court. That was one of the uses they were planning, but they're willing to stipulate that they won't use it for that. And they have, you know, eagle eyes on them next door, so I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Well, I think the reason we didn't like the pickleball is because, I think, because it would be noisy.
That's right.
So, so I'd like to hear what you're going to use it for that's not noisy.
I can, I can ask them to clarify exactly what they're going to use it for, if you want.
That would be helpful.
I can submit a written submission.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Silent disco.
So.
Badminton.
Yoga classes.
There you go, yoga class.
Okay, Kevin, you said.
I'm going to make a motion that we close the hearing, keep the comment period open to 2:21, in addition to any applicant submissions for a decision on March 6.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both sides.
Okay, number 12 on the agenda, DLK Interests LLC, 21 Oakview Road, North Sea, Sub-County Tax Map Number 900-32-2-32.2.
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York.
With a sports court.
Sports court now. It is.
It is?
For a tennis court.
Yeah.
55 by 100. So.
What did you change it?
It's a small 55 by 105 tennis court located in what should be the rear yard and what should be a conforming location. But as we noted at the last time, Oakview Road juts in and as a result creates a small front yard there, which requires this relief. Now, when we were last here, there was, there were members of the community that were very concerned about this. As a result, we moved the tennis court five feet from that road and five feet towards Bayview. So five feet to the north and five feet to the west. That increased the setback to 10 feet that we're asking relief for in the front yard. And again, requiring the tennis accessory structure in a front yard.
That's down here. This is the Oakview, the.
Oakview Road, that's right.
So that setback is 10 now?
Instead of 10.
Instead of 5.
Yes, that setback's 10 instead of 5. It's conforming in the rear yard to 25. And it's, and again, the front yard is, it needs, because it's in a front yard technically, it needs relief. We had it staked as was requested. So that's available for the neighbors to see. I do have pictures that show the stake of the lines. I can share these.
Okay, Candace?
I only have one of each, so if you want to just pass them.
Yeah, just pass them around.
If John wants to give them, you can, no, give them to, to Kevin McDonald.
Kevin. So you can see, there's the orange marks on them that show where the lines are. You can see that this road encroaches a lot on, or a good deal onto property. And as a result, it makes it seem like the court is much closer than it actually is because of the road encroachment.
And you've also, you have narrowed the corners on the.
Yes, we narrowed the corners too, so that creates further setback.
Right.
Any more discussion with those neighbors who had issues when they were here?
Uh, no, I believe my client reached, reached out, but we haven't heard anything from them. I don't know if they're going to, I, my office hasn't spoke to them. Or they haven't, I shouldn't say that, they haven't reached out to my office. We gave them our contact.
Well, again, thank you very much for responding to some of the comments that we made.
You can also see that it is densely wooded, and if you want to make it a condition.
Yes.
Condition that that be maintained, no problem.
Okay, and we did.
I think we should make a condition on maintaining the vegetation.
Yeah, sure.
No, just the way that they get access, like Dorset or Oakview, like.
No, they're, they come this way.
They come off of that.
They come up Dorset, and they come in this way.
Oakview is this weird jut road.
It's a very strange location.
Well, it's a strange location, it's a strange road.
Yeah.
So it just has an open address, but it looks like they're coming off of Dorset, right?
Yeah.
They come in out, so if you see here, here's a good area, that was, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly right.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a weird little front yard, but no one, they don't get any access off of that. They come off of.
Yeah, they have a couple of front yards, like three.
Three front yards.
Yeah. Okay, and then the other comment that we had was to move it closer to the pool area, which we've done.
We did that.
Yeah, you moved it closer to the pool.
We moved it closer to Saywood Street and closer to the pool, so.
Okay, is there any other comments from the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 21 Oakview Road? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 21 Oakview Road?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, Julie?
Yes, so thank you for making those adjustments. We are going to close the couple of hearings, keep it open for written submissions until February 21, with a decision for March 6.
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair both sides, okay, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl, have a good night.
Thank you.
14 is adjourned.
Okay, number 15 on the agenda, Michael Rosa Federico, 95 Inlet Road West, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-176-1-1. Ah, finally.
Yes, yes. Good evening. Ricky Dean is going to be logging on through Zoom.
Okay, I think I've sworn you guys in, right?
Uh, no.
Last, last time, I did.
Yeah, but you're still sworn in, for our purposes. Okay, and the. Yeah, okay, so, right, so I don't need to swear you in, but you do need to state your name and addresses.
Peter Nestle. Peter Nestle.
You're on the plan, so you can.
Yep. Michael Federico, 95 Inlet Road West.
Done it, thank you.
Thank you.
And on Zoom, Agina Rigdon, DKR Shores, here to represent.
Okay, okay, so last we were here, had some concerns, and what do you want to tell us now?
Well, first I want to ask if everyone had a chance to review the plans that were dropped off by the owner and the cover letter that was drafted by the architect?
I did, yes, I did, it's very helpful.
It would be good to.
Stated for the record, but yes, we did get.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone had them, got them, had a chance to review them. As you noted, we, we listened to the concerns of all the panelists, and the board, and the neighbors. I don't think the neighbors here tonight, but we've been in communication with them. They have also seen the latest rendition of the changes that were made by Michael and the architect. So, instead of drop the ceiling heights, we think it would really deter from the character of the design of the house being modern and open concept. And the concerns from the neighbor, they opted to shift the house to the west instead, towards North Beach Road. And rearranged a little bit of square footage to be able to do it. They also cut back the deck, so we weren't pushed too far and are closer to the water. And I think the neighbors are good happy with a 14-foot setback instead of the previously proposed 11.3 from that property line, that was a concern. And I'm wondering if how the board thinks about that. And they also did a little bit of change to the roof line over the garage, the bedroom that's above the garage. They took out the parapet, so that we were able to bring down the relief requested for the cubic foot for the pyramid. Now, remind previously that they were asking for 2,792.65. We are now down to a total of 2,055.66 of relief. Now, keep in mind, as you all know, this is a highly constrained, small lot, we know this. With a waterside front yard, two roads, and the fact that it's the old house, and we're improving the setbacks from what currently exists. We are also putting in the new IA system environmentally. We are, have Conservation Board on board and already have a preliminary approval. And at this point, we would really like to proceed because we cannot file with the DEC, refile, I should say, continue the application that's on hold. We have to go back to the Conservation Board and modify that permit. We have to go to engineering, so we have a lot of other permits that we have to get, and everything depends on this decision.
As well as Department of Health.
And the Department of Health is waiting for your blessing as well.
Uh, Agina?
Yes, ma'am.
You could not, you're telling me that you have not changed the 10-foot or the 9-foot? Is that right?
It's 8.10, and 10 is on the first floor. We did not change that. We shifted the house instead and kind of moved the square footage around a little, so there's more square footage on the west. So they did a little reconfiguration to be able to do this.
What's the possibility of moving that 10-foot to 9-foot?
They would really prefer not to, I'm, I'm sorry, it's just, the whole design of the modern concept is just really hinging on, you know, that this is like their dream home. They want to live out here year-round. He owns a very large moving company, and he would like to work remote. He's got a huge family and a dad that has to live with them. It's just, it's, they really, really want to crack down on the 10-foot. They really want the 10-foot on the first floor.
We also have limited, we also have limited peaks, because we have a flat roof.
Yeah, it's a flat roof, it's all, it's the design, it's really the design.
And I did ask the question in the last meeting, and I said, was the concern 10-foot or the concern cubic footage?
Yeah, I would rather make the, the neighbor happy. And we also talked with them about doing a fence, by the way. So, as you know, we can't put a fence in the buffer area, and we can't put a fence toward the front yard, but there's a small section of where the house is that faces the neighbor, where the pool and the house is. And we're, we're good with putting a fence there, and the neighbor is okay with it. So at some point, we're, we're thinking about putting a fence, a small section of fence in that area, just so that they have some privacy.
Would you be willing to make that as a condition of the variance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And what is the neighbor's reaction?
They like, they liked it.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, they were.
They're very happy to have.
Appreciate it.
They're very happy to have the existing garage taken down.
Right, which we know had some improvements done without the benefit of a permit. So, you know, we're just, we just want to start again the right way. And the fact that the only relief they're really asking for is the pyramid, I mean, this guy is just, and the architect has come to every meeting and has been amazing, by the way.
Asking the question, it's on the clock. I get my money's worth.
So what is the pyramid relief we're at now?
20, 20, 2055.66.
2055.66.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, I appreciate that you listened last time, and I appreciate the effort that was made. I actually, not knowing, I mean, I, I, I thought it was moved over, and I thought that was a smart move. But I'm going to ask you one more thing. Is there any way you can break the roof on the garage to lessen the request total number? And the reason, I'll give you the full reason. There are other people that have applications before us, and I worry about the, the size of what one application grant could be, and how that invites comparisons. You guys sat through most of today, you heard it all, right?
Yeah.
This is our life, so, I, you know, every decision matters and every reason matters. And if there's, if there's an accommodation that can be made above the roof to reduce that any, that would, I would find that very favorable, we appreciate it.
I think we're under previous requests from other applications right now.
I know, but.
Appreciate that you made it, I honestly have no problem, it's, to me, it's not a great amount of relief.
Yeah, I, I appreciate very much that you've taken the time to take a look at this. You know, I also appreciate what Kevin says, you know, in terms of precedent, everybody coming back and saying you did this. I, 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 in my mind, can distinguish this piece of property from some of the other pieces of property that we're looking at. They are long and narrow, and this is like, you know, more of a circular kind of a property. So I don't, and it's also, it doesn't have anything on one side. I mean, you know, it's got that open area on the other side. So, unless everybody else feels strongly about, about trying to see if they can squeeze it out a little further, I mean, it would be very nice if you could.
Can you just replicate for me the, a reduction of the 10-foot doesn't reduce the pyramid request? Is that what I heard?
Well, we, we didn't say. Yeah, we didn't say that it doesn't reduce it. When we, I asked a question last meeting, when you asked us to reduce the cubic footage, and then some people talked about 10-foot going to 9, and then some people were talking about cubic footage, and I said, well, you know, where do we have to be? Is it, is it we focus on the ceiling heights, or we focus on the cubic footage? And then the answer that I believe everybody said was the cubic footage.
Yeah, but the ceiling height can affect the.
But, yes, it could affect. Correct, it could, but, you know, today's, where we are today, it's common to have 10-foot ceilings, you know, like.
Right, but we consistently encourage people not to have 10-foot ceilings for this very purpose, and it seems to me that you've only brought the relief down about 100 and so cubic feet.
No, we brought it down 700. 737.
700, you went down. You were at 2203.
No, you were 20. No, it was 279.
It was now what, 20?
2792.65. So we brought the relief down by 736, I'm sorry, almost 734 cubic feet.
737, or 26.4%. I mean, we came down 26.4%. That's. The thinking was, Mr. McDonald was talking about the, be creative and look at the, and we looked at what you just said. If you move it this way, you're reducing the cubic footage. There was a different way to skin the cat than just compressing the house.
Exactly.
And it, there was, by moving it over, you solve two problems in one year. You kill two birds with one stone. You increase the distance and the density problem, and we looked at it as a creative solution that way. And then that eliminated a good portion of it, and then you also looked at the front yard, the mezzanine part was longer, we shortened it, we, we looked at any way to reduce cubic footage that we could. And the cubic footage was looked at as the answer, the proper, proper answer from an architectural point of view. Reducing the height, I understand your point of view, but from my point of view, you have big, these bigger spaces in the modern house, and you need a proportional roof height. If you start squishing it, it gets too, it looks a bit. I understand, I honestly don't think reducing it is going to change anybody's life. No, that was my thought, my thought was, what Mr. McDonald said was, was the proper, and also we had, it's a unique case where we had an ability to move it toward the west, and we didn't affect anybody, and it seemed, accommodated a lot of things.
And I just want to also say that sometimes when we have these applications, the only way that they can reduce, you know, the pyramid, is to reduce ceiling heights. You have gone and tried to accommodate the whole design in order to reduce this.
No, we looked at, we looked at what you talked about.
So some people don't have the option of, you know, being as creative as you have, so.
No, if you have a narrow lot and you're squished.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, and so they have to like come down, yeah.
You have to come down.
So I, I have no problem, and I really do appreciate the fact that you have, you know, taken the time and effort to make modifications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the board who wishes to comment?
No.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to comment?
No one is, their hands up, but there seems to be a neighbor, oh, okay, now he is.
Okay.
Oh, somebody's going to either.
Room? Jeff?
Jeff Taylor?
Yep.
Is that the neighbor?
Back up.
We almost saw you. There you are, there you are. Did I swear you in the last time? I think I did.
Yeah, Jeff Taylor and my wife Allison Taylor from 91 Inlet Road.
Okay, John.
Just like to say, thank Mike for the, the changes that he did make, like, it's already been commented. So we do appreciate that, and it's been commented that it's certainly a big improvement over the garage that's currently there. So we appreciate that, and, you know, Mike said that, you know, we can get back together and talk about, you know, once we get, he goes, go on the project, on the fence or whatever in between, so we're happy with that. So we appreciate the changes, you know, but, you know, space is always good, so. But I think he's tried to build in our concerns with all the other constraints that he has. We know it's tough to balance all the different ones with all this money and everything else that he's going with, so we're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we really do appreciate when applicants and neighbors do speak, because sometimes these things can get resolved, or it certainly is a happier ending.
And we appreciate you taking the time to come back on.
It's important, you know, we want to have good neighbors and have good relationships with neighbors on our both, both sides. And we've recently both changed, and I think on both sides, it's a marked improvement, so we're.
Great, great.
Because I, I, we go out there for relaxation, and I don't want to have stress between us and any neighbor.
I just, you know, that's.
I appreciate that.
That's, that's my kind of refuge, so I, we appreciate Mike and all he's done.
Okay, that's very good.
All right.
All right, Kevin, take it away.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we close the hearing for comments received until February 21 for a decision on March 6.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone drive safe home. Yeah, you too.
You're home.
I'm downtown.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. See you tomorrow.
Okay, where are we?
We are at decisions.
We are on to decisions, okay. Let's see.
Good night, good seeing you.
Good night, I know I got some decisions, now we're all. Okay, who's got?
I'll start, Mike, you're up.
Okay, yeah, I know, but we're at the first one.
Do you read this topic? And I'll take it back, Susan, for Berserk.
All right, let's do Berserk first. No, go ahead, you can. finds that the applicant passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Law for a pyramid encroachment in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-nine cubic feet on the north side of the property for a proposed two-story dwelling and in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five cubic feet for a proposed attached carport on the south side of the well. Two, Town Code Section 330-115C Continuance for a front yard setback of forty point two feet where ninety, forty, I'm sorry, forty-nine point two feet is pre-existing for a proposed porch on the west side of the premises and a front yard setback of forty-eight point two feet where fifty-five point two feet is pre-existing for a proposed porch on the east side of the premises and for a minimum side yard setback of nine feet where sixteen point five feet is pre-existing and the total side yard of twenty-five point five feet where forty point eight feet is pre-existing for a proposed attached carport. And three, Town Code Section 330-11 Resident Districts Tables of Dimensional Regulations, Town Code Section 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and Town Code Section 330-83C Yards for an accessory distance from street setback of thirty-one point one feet where seventy feet is required for a proposed in-ground swimming pool to be located within the required front yard of the principal building. These variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by Gary Benz, last revised December fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and the plans and elevations prepared by Jeffrey Sands, RA, last revised December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The granting of this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including, one, the installation and continued maintenance by the applicant and all successors entitled of all vegetation as shown on the site plan prepared by Jeffrey Sands, RA, last dated December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and, two, the removal of the parking area on the Waters Edge Road and the asphalt driveway on Noel Road.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Yep.
This is a decision in the application of Robert and Jane Drake, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-357-1-37.1. This application is for the property located at twenty-three Baycrest Avenue, West Hampton. Applicant requests a variance for the size of a proposed accessory apartment in order to make a unit ADA compliant. Considering the facts and circumstances of this application and the modest size of both the existing dwelling and the proposed apartment, the board finds that this application passes the standards set forth in the New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this, this board grants from Town Code Section 330-11.2G1 special standards to allow the size of the proposed accessory apartment in, in a detached building in comparison to the main dwelling to be forty-one point five percent where a maximum of thirty-five percent is permitted, as shown on the site plan prepared by Jason N. M. Ormond, Registered Architect, last dated December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, and the floor plans and elevation prepared by Jason M. Ormond, RA, dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair both sides. Okay, we have one more decision, then we have a secret. Okay, go.
This is for Islandwide Premier Services Inc., Suffolk County Tax Map 900-354-3-3.2. This application is for property located at thirteen A Summit Boulevard, West Hampton. Applicant requests variances in connection with proposed two-lot subdivision configuration preferred by the planning board. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed two-lot subdivision for proposed Lot One, Town Code 330, Section Six, General Regulations, that references 330-11 Resident Districts Table of Dimensioned Regulations for a lot area of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet where forty thousand square feet is required and lot width of one hundred and eighteen point one nine where one hundred and fifty feet is required in Town Code Section 330-82 for a road frontage of zero feet where forty feet is required, and proposed Lot Two, Town Code 330-6, that references Town Code 330-11 for a lot area of thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-two point seven feet where forty thousand square feet is required and a lot width of one twenty-five point seventy-one where one hundred and fifty is required, and Town Code Section 330-82 for a road frontage of zero feet where a minimum of forty feet is required, as shown on the survey prepared by Vincent Tenacio, Licensed Land Surveyor, last dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. This relief is granted for the creation of the lots only and not for any other existing or proposed buildings or structures, and notes that the lots will be subject to R40 zoning regulations. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair both sides. Okay, we have one more decision, then we have a secret. Okay, go.
This is for Islandwide Premier Services Inc., Suffolk County Tax Map 900-354-3-3.2. This application is for property located at thirteen A Summit Boulevard, West Hampton. Applicant requests variances in connection with proposed two-lot subdivision configuration preferred by the planning board. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed two-lot subdivision for proposed Lot One, Town Code 330, Section Six, General Regulations, that references 330-11 Resident Districts Table of Dimensioned Regulations for a lot area of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet where forty thousand square feet is required and a lot width of one twenty-five point seventy-one where one hundred and fifty is required, and Town Code Section 330-82 for a road frontage of zero feet where a minimum of forty feet is required, as shown on the survey prepared by Vincent Tenacio, Licensed Land Surveyor, last dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. This relief is granted for the creation of the lots only and not for any other existing or proposed buildings or structures, and notes that the lots will be subject to R40 zoning regulations. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.